We can get into a Q and A period if you would like. Go with specific questions, even for your own individual operations.
I think this might be a good time to maybe bring up the other speakers.
Yes.
Have a quick panel, just so everyone, it seems like we've got a lot of good knowledge. So we can get everybody up here in case anyone has any questions that they've been saving, just for a couple of minutes here before we end. Does anyone have any questions to start? We've got one over here.
Yes, you mentioned that it took quite a few Listeria to cause illness. Last presenter, can you comment then why we're stuck with zero tolerance for Listeria?
Well, this is not my area of expertise. Charles would probably answer better than I can.
Yes. Step up to the mic. There we go. The answer is because we don't know how little will cause illness. Back to threshold for allergens that I mentioned, there actually is a level below which allergen won't cause a sensitive person to react, but that level is no. The same is true with Listeria. So in this country, the effective zero tolerance really means 0.4 organisms per 25 grams, I think. That's the lowest level it can be detected at.
It sounds like from what you were saying, or what's been said though, that in the cooler, in the freezer, I mean, pretty much everywhere, if you start out with a little bit of Listeria, it's going to grow.
Yeah.
The longer you hold fruit in your cooler, the longer it's in the freezer, the more you get.
Yeah.
If it's, once it's present, it doesn't stop growing.
Yep. Well, heat stops it. I'm now, I've now moved into a sensitive population age, so I don't eat cold smoked salmon anymore either. As much as I love it, if there's a little bit there, then it's going to grow during refrigeration and I just, I want to keep on going. I'll just pass on the smoked salmon.
So I have kind of add-on on this because it's also, you know, infections also depend on our host, who we are. So it's because it's why in my presentations, I mentioned on the susceptible people populations. And so elderly and usually it's, you know, high chance because low infection dose. The Listeria unique thing is because it's intracellular bacteria. That's mean, once one cell get into our cells, its bacteria itself can proliferate within our bodies, our cells. Supposedly our immune cell to attack the pathogen, but Listeria can survive and grow inside our immune cells. That's, you know, unique thing is. So.
You know, so the approach that you use that way is regular sanitation, just don't give it a chance to build up to that. You know you're going to be bringing more into your plant, you know, but don't let it populate, you know, without reducing those populations by sanitation. And the cell wall for Listeria is a little different than we see for E. coli and Salmonella. You know, those are gram-negative organisms. Listeria is a gram-positive organism. That's not that different, but by paying particular attention to Listeria, it's very, very manageable. We just have to pay attention to it.
For documentation purposes, is there somewhere where I can, does it say somewhere in literature that there is zero tolerance for Listeria monocytogens? Yes, because I know the guidance document for controlling Listeria talks about 100 cells.
What guidance document?
The FDA document for Listeria, controlling Listeria.
I just know that from a regulatory threshold, if it's present, quantifiably present, which is 0.4 or 25 grams, or maybe it is 100 grams, it's considered to be violative. And yes, I can find you where it says that if you like, if you just give me your contact information.
Thank you.
In a little bit of humor, you know, I probably eat more dirt than anybody. And it's really funny, as our country grows and time goes on, the paranoia of food and the testing that can be taken down to the minute detail, but a lot of the people that ate a lot of dirt are really kind of resistant to a lot of this stuff. But all of a sudden, if you're trying to make yourself too clean, you really set yourself up for a, for a kind of coming back at you, not being too resistant to nothing.
Yeah, that's, that's true, but you know, it's unfortunate, but Mother Nature's pretty good at picking the low-hanging fruit. You know, when we see outbreaks, generally, so many of the victims are either children, the elderly, people that already have other issues. And so those are the ones that are most, you know, most vulnerable and those are the ones that we have to look to protect because those of us that are, knock on wood, healthy at least, you know, we stand a much better chance of withstanding it.
One of the issues too, I think was very important, we brought up was whenever HACCP was introduced in the seafood industry, that's my commodity expertise going back to the late 70s. And when we introduced HACCP into the seafood industry, the early adopters of that program found out that their quality improved. They started having less problems because people were paying more attention to what they were doing. So even though these regulations are, I'd say, pretty burdensome, and HACCP, when it came into the seafood industry, was viewed the same way, people did find that they were actually, after a certain level of activation energy was reached, after they put some capital and human resources into the program, they actually found that their quality of their operations improved significantly. So I'm hoping we're going to see the same thing for the produce safety rule.
And let me just sum up that, Barbara. Competitive advantage for compliance. FDA is actually looking for measures to help reward firms that are doing a good job. And being able to sell more product because you're in compliance with FISMA is seen as a motivator.
And I think the market, even though there are exemptions for small producers, from a market standpoint, I really don't think that's going to hold a whole lot of water.
I agree wholeheartedly. Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. Are you talking about the tester amendment?
Not necessarily that. Well, that's part of it, the fact that there are exemptions. If I'm a retailer in this region and there's somebody that I know is compliant with a food safety program and somebody who isn't, it's not going to matter to me. I'm going to buy from the person that has a food safety program. So we saw this with the longliners and some other people in the seafood industry back in the 80s. They were exempt from FISMA and after about six months, they decided that they were going to comply because of market reasons.
I guess my question would be, you know, when you're talking about inspecting one half of 1% of the imports, yeah, we're talking about market and, you know, by addressing this, it will improve our marketing. Is that realistic?
You know, I'm going to have Charles answer after this, but as an importer, because we import, you know, that, the number is almost misleading because, example, we have, we grow grapes in Mexico, you know, because they come on before our California crop starts. So we get, we get regularly tested by FDA when our grapes come in. But once we've been tested for the same vineyard, they're not testing the same vineyard just because we get a different shipment the following day. So even though that might look like a half percent, they're covering a significant amount of the suppliers that come in. I have no idea how many of that is, but I can tell you on our part, that most of the product that we bring in gets checked one, at one time or another.
Yes, that's exactly how FDA prioritizes it, that each year, the new season comes in, almost every single grower gets checked at least once. Another aspect is after oil, and maybe even more than oil right now, the single largest commodity imported into this country is coffee. It's not going to get looked at by FDA because the roasting process is going to burn anything that might conceivably cause harm out of the coffee beans before it gets to consumers. So it, the one-half percent is, you got to look at it beyond just what the sheer number is. It's not an equal 100% across the board. Some things need more attention, other things need a negligible amount of attention.
The other thing that's going to come up here too is with the TPP provisions. There's a provision for systems audits. So what provision is going to happen, I hope it's going to help our trade with Japan, is in the sense that if we're going to be doing systems audits, which is what these gentlemen are talking about here in the US, and allowing product to come in under those types of systems, our trading partners are going to have to conduct similar programs, which I'm hoping in the long run is going to be beneficial to US exports to other markets.
The World Health Organizations just come out here with basically, one out of 10 people is going to have a foodborne illness, of which they're reporting 420,000 people are going to die this next year, 125,000 children. You know, we're still, US is one of the safest food producers and consumers in the world, especially seeing these kind of numbers from the world. Any comments? You know, let's not, let's not get these people all scared. I think we're doing a good job, but we can do more. And that's what I think is being asked.
That's a great summary. We're doing a good job, but we can do more.
You know, as we see the media publish outbreaks and what we have is detection methods that weren't available before that I mentioned, but the fact is, I think, we have the safest food supply the world has ever known. And it's still not, there's still room to get better, and that's what we're doing. The problem right now isn't with the, with the people like you that have gap programs in place, it's with all the people that don't. And that's what this is for. With the exception of the water quality issues and some of the, some of the details, most of what I had up there in those slides were things you guys were already doing in your gap programs. And so it's, this is actually written for the people that aren't doing what you're doing. And they're requiring, and now that it's required, I don't, I don't expect FDA to be, to show up at your door to inspect your records for no reason at all. They don't have the manpower and it doesn't make any sense. Now, one thing I will say though, about the documentation and the record-keeping, is that if anything ever does go wrong with any of your products, that you better make sure that all your documentation is in place because you will be held accountable for it.
With the new FISMA regulations, as an importer, what are you responsible for now? Because I do believe it's changed, correct?
Well, now, this is, this is different because see, in the past, the manufacturer, you know, on the customs entry was, was the responsible party. The importer was an agent and was related, but, but the onus was still on the manufacturer. Now, under FISMA, legally, the responsibility is shifted to the importer. Now, that the FDA will still hold the manufacturers with great interest because what's to say that that grower, processor, the manufacturer couldn't ship the product to someone else to import? So they will keep an eye, but, but it's still the importer that's on the hot seat. The idea there is that FDA realized that they can't keep tabs on every producer in the world, so they want to make sure that importers know what they're importing and from whom.
The other issue too is they, they have jurisdiction over the US importer. They don't, the FDA does not have jurisdiction, even though they'd like to have it over the foreign processor.
Well, I've been with Jamar for 20 years, so, I mean, I came aboard before gaps were published. So we've been fairly proactive at it. And so what do we do? We train our growers internally. We have, you know, we, we work with our growers directly. You know, we, we know who we're dealing with. We actually visit these places, you know, we, I think that knowing, knowing your suppliers is one of the most important things. I mean, it's not just a certificate that you might have on file on your computer. And it's that proactive approach, what Charles terms as a culture of food safety, that for us has been working.
And there are lots of means to verify compliance with the standards for the US, so many so that the Foreign Supplier Verification Program rule, well, it looks bewildering at times to how many ways you can verify that a foreign producer is working. New Zealand, for instance, the US and New Zealand have a mutual agreement that each other's systems are good enough to satisfy each other's countries. So if you're importing from New Zealand, your burden for evidence that the New Zealand manufacturer is producing in accordance with US requirements is very low. China is not one of these countries. For China, it may require audits or other records to show that they're doing a good job. By the way, Canada is close to being recognized under this system that New Zealand has. So a near neighbor is going to suddenly find it much easier to document its companies being in compliance with FISMA.
Oh, and I should mention also that Canada's working on their version of FISMA, the Save Food for Canadians Act, and the jury's still out what the final version will look like, but it won't be the same as FISMA, but I expect it to be relatively similar.
It's supposed to accomplish the same. It's supposed to accomplish the same goal, assurance of safety for consumers.
The one difference there is FISMA is risk-based body of work and the Save Food for Canadians Act, they call that an outcome-based, but I think at the very end, they're probably talking the same thing.
Just for kind of an accreditation, a lot of the, our present processors of our fruits have their own inside labs, this checking the fruit all the time. And also, I would tend to believe you as an importer, even if, even whether it got tested or not tested by FDA, that you're, you're going to run samples yourself to making darn sure that, that what you are buying, it still comes under, to cover your own butt.
Well, surprisingly, we don't do a lot of raw product testing for, for most of our fresh produce. And for the simple reason, it's not a statistically valid measure of safety and because, because contamination is not homogeneous. So example would be if a load of large tomatoes has about 160,000 tomatoes in a container, in a truck. And if you had gross contamination, say 2%, you know, that's what, 3,200 bad tomatoes out of the 160, it would be like filling up a bathtub full of white marbles, taking a handful of black marbles, tossing them in there, and then reaching in blindly until you pulled out a black marble. Our chances of finding it wouldn't be very, very good. And so in areas like, when you go to your processor, what are they going to make with it? Are they going to make jam or jelly? Are they going to make juice? In this case, when they blend it, it does become a homogeneous product and therefore the tests are actually a valuable tool. I'm not against testing. Actually, I wish that testing raw agricultural commodities, whole fresh produce, you know, was worked, because it would make my job a lot easier. But it depends on the application. You have to target your testing, you know, to, to the right context to make it valuable.
When you're, when you're talking about Listeria and how it forms biofilm and we learned a lot over the last couple of days about how some of our fungicides, the mold became resistant to the fungicides, does Listeria become resistant and like change, mutate, and where you need to switch up sanitizers and stuff?
I think Dr. Ju could answer this better than me, but, but the killing mechanism is actually a physical mechanism. It's not like, it's not like an antibiotic. It literally rips the, the cells apart, so I don't see any resistance happening to that one.
So the microorganisms do kind of, you know, evolve to resistant to some sanitizers. But you know, regarding to with the sanitizer and antibiotics, probably sanitizer is less resistant because physically we are trying to, always they are membrane with structurally, you know, from outside layers. And for the antibiotics, physically, because bacteria can come, can come up with some kind of mechanisms, because antibiotic, you know, when you, when we see the doctor, regarding to the different infections, doctor will give us a different antibiotics. And because their mechanism is all different, some is kind of targeted is protein synthesis or something. And that's why, you know, you need to go into inside of the bacteria. And bacteria have kind of compensatory mechanism to evolve it. For the sanitizers, because we are more kind of targeting the structurally, probably is less resistant, but you know, they are made, but it probably is a good idea if you have alternative, which they're, you know, alternatively.
I had a question for us processors. My understanding is that suppliers of primary packaging are not, are exempt of the preventive controls of FISMA? Is that correct? Maybe they lobby better, more expensive lawyers? I don't know, but I, it's hard to believe that they're out. I know that they don't have to comply with that, but there are other ways where we're going to have to work directly with them, particularly in the concept of, can you provide assurance that, you know, there's no, I don't know, hazard involved with this primary packaging or who's going to control it, et cetera, et cetera? Maybe even for supplier verification, that kind of thing. But what are ways that they are going to be involved with FISMA, although technically they're not?
Well, it depends on where they are. And it depends, it depends because of how Congress wrote the act. The preventive controls are defined more narrowly as food. Packaging material is an indirect food additive. That's how it's regulated. So domestic manufacturers of packaging material are not mandated to institute preventive controls. However, if the packaging material is being imported, that's a different section of the act that Congress wrote, and they didn't narrow the definition of food as they did in the preventive control part. So FDA has interpreted that non-narrowing to include packaging material. If you're importing packaging material from China, you will have to comply with the voluntary, the Foreign Supplier Verification Program to assure yourself that the manufacturer of the packaging material is producing goods in accordance with US standards. A defect in the act, maybe, but definitely a difference between where it's defined one way and where it's defined another way leads imported packaging material to be more restricted than domestically produced. Whether this gets to the World Trade Organization, I have no idea.
So the Listeria Control Guidance Document, who is that created by? Is that the FDA's current stance on how processors should control Listeria? Such that if they come into your plant and you are or aren't following that guidance document, will they look at you as, I guess, doing good or bad?
Well, I can't talk to you about how FDA would react. Charles can, but I can tell you, the first part of your question, it was written, it was written by United Fresh's Food Safety and Technology Council, David Gombas, Barry Eisenberg. Trying to remember who all the authors were on there. I was involved in it and I'm not a microbiologist, they are. Anyway, and it's, it's a guidance. It is, it's not a regulation. And, and I do know though, that FDA put a copy of it on FDA.gov, so they, they didn't disagree with it, let's put it that way.
Because it's posted on the FDA website, it has a certain degree of an imprimatur from the agency. The way FDA deals with guidance is, if you follow the guidance to the best you can and you still have a problem, well, you got to fix the problem, but the agency won't be taking regulatory action against you. If you do not follow the guidance, then the expectation is that the means you do employ will be as good or better than the guidance and you can show why that is so. It can't just be, well, we want to do it this way because it's easier. There has to be, in the FDA's eyes, evidence that what you're doing is still as good as what the guidance calls for.
I guess I'd be curious to know then on that, that guidance document, I know Omar mentioned it as well, they do mention, if your product does not support the growth of Listeria, if there is under 100 CFU a gram, you can go ahead and release that into trade.
I'll, I'll have to find the guidance and see exactly what it says. I'm, to be blunt, more familiar with processed food than raw agricultural commodities.
Do you have any other questions? Oh.
Can you expand where you see environmental monitoring going for processors?
Yes, environmental monitoring is going to be required for ready-to-eat foods that, that there is a risk of it being contaminated because the process used to manufacture it doesn't have a kill step. For instance, cold smoked salmon, but that's seafood. Another would be, well, potato salad. It may have a kill step in cooking the potatoes, but then it gets, you know, other ingredients are added to it cold without there being a kill step between the actual finished manufacturing and the distribution to consumers. If it's ready to eat and doesn't have the kill step and there are things that could have contaminated it, then environmental monitoring is going to be expected by FDA.
The other thing too is, I think, is there are foods now that people are consuming that we would not in the past have considered to be ready to eat, like frozen vegetables. So a lot of people take frozen peas or corn and they just thaw them out and throw them in a salad. So if there is a general practice or a knowledge in the, in the industry that, or heaven forbid a recall or an outbreak associated with consuming something like raw thawed frozen vegetables, then you have to consider at that point that your product may be consumed without a kill step. And then you would wisely decide to adopt some type of reasonable environmental monitoring program. So I think the scope of what's considered to be a ready-to-eat food is evolving and the products that are covered are expanding.
Cookie dough, for instance, Toll House cookie dough. The expectation is that you would put it in the oven and bake it. But the fact is, about 30% of those producing, you know, baking the cookies would also be sampling it raw. There was an outbreak. And, and now I know that that firm pasteurizes the flour because they couldn't figure out where it could possibly have come from, other than the flour. Frozen what?
As far as environmental program, then what about our frozen fruit then?
Like, like ice cream?
No, fruit.
Frozen fruit.
Frozen berries.
FDA is going to be issuing a lot more guidance. And there is the Technical Assistance Network that is available on their website for exactly these kinds of questions, which is my stock answer to when I don't know.
But from a legal perspective, if you know that people have a practice of consuming your product without cooking it, then I would strongly recommend that you consider instituting a environmental testing program, just from a liability standpoint.
So we are GFSI certified and industry standard and SQF and everything, they require us to do environmental testing. But FISMA wise, I thought it was a combination of the two. Like you have to first determine, yes, it is ready to eat and there has to be a kill step. So in our case, where some of our product may be considered ready to eat, but there is no kill step, do you know where I'm going at? Does it have to comply with both at the same time or just one?
Regulation is murky. There's a lot of overlap. There's a lot of holes in it. The comments don't help a lot in trying to figure out what's really going on. I've read all of it. The first rule was 857 pages with 52 pages of single-spaced regulations. The produce safety rule is 801 pages with 48 single-spaced pages. It's a lot of stuff in there. There's a lot of inconsistencies. So I think the So I think the thing to do is, you know, what makes sense? You know, what do we need to do to protect our consumers? What are people doing with our product? What do we know or could reasonably anticipate people do with our product? And then try to develop a food safety plan that addresses that. And in some ways, the regulations are, they're very highly relevant, but if you have a chance of improving a practice so that somebody doesn't get sick and you get sued and lose your business, I would go do that.
And because you are certified by these outside agencies, entities, I know that BRC and GFSI have both committed to doing a gap analysis between what their standards are and what FISMA calls for. And BRC said they would initially put out an annex. You know, there's BRC, then there'd be like the BRC-FISMA annex. They also said that anything that, you know, they might put in this annex to be sure you're compliant with FISMA that makes sense anyway, they would just incorporate into the standards. And one of the holy grails of food regulatory behavior or food regulators is that there be a standard that everyone can recognize and accept will be good enough to serve everybody, including Walmart, Kmart, Costco, you know, to, so that everybody can say, if you meet this, you're doing okay. I think that the nongovernmental entities like BRC will be the route that we achieve that. This editorializing on my part.
Actually, I know Global Gaps also looking to measure their standard against FISMA, and I think it's likely that both PMA and United Fresh will probably do the same thing, you know, for its members.
So with the environmental monitoring, just to touch, what do you think about food contact surfaces? Did you see more people asking for that?
I don't think food contact surfaces should be a regular part of an environmental monitoring program, but I also think that checking them every now and then is not a bad idea. Do not check them before you start up. That's supposed to be clean. Check them after they've been running for a few hours. You just want to be sure your sanitation program is performing as intended.
Yeah, I mentioned the, we want to recall last year because of improper testing, or it wasn't the testing that was bad, it's when they did it and how they did it. And so I would agree, be very careful with any food contact surface testing, what you want, which you can do, though, what we do is, we validate our sanitation. We use bacterial enzyme assay validations, we use ATP bioluminescence, and it sounds fancy, but basically, it just shows you almost immediately whether your sanitation is working or not.
Anybody else have any other questions for our experts up here? Well, in that case, I'd like to thank you all again. This is really above and beyond. Dr. Zhu, Dr. Rasko, Charles, and Walter. This panel was definitely not something they were expecting, and I think it was really helpful to you all and was really great service. And thank you to all of you for attending this new session we're running. It's really appreciated. I hope you all enjoyed it. We have, for those of you who signed up, we have food safety certificates. They're alphabetical over on those tables over there, and you can just pick those up. And yeah, let us know if you have any great feedback for us. Thanks so much.